I don't see, oh, there it is, okay.
The appointed hour of six A, six P M. Having been reached, I welcome everyone to this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals. My name is Steve Judge, Chair of the Amherst zoning board of appeal. I hereby call this meeting to order. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty one and extended by chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Additionally, the meeting recordings may be viewed on the town of Amherst YouTube channel and the Z V A webpage. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty eight and article ten, special permit granting authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties and to add interest. In accordance with the provisions, uh, excuse me, we'll begin with a roll call of the regular members of the Z V A. Steve Judge is present. Mr. Meadows.
Present.
Mr. Henry.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
And Mr. Slovater.
Present.
Also in attendance tonight are Jen Mullins, a permit administrator. She's helping us out with managing our, our meeting tonight. Christine Brestrop, the planning director, and Rob Mora, the building commissioner. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst zoning bylaw is section ten point three eight. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by Tom's staff. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or for additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen. The chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, present your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board would normally hold public hearings where information about a project and input from the public is gathered, followed by a public meeting for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the closed appearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has one hundred days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a twenty day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds to take effect. Today, the board will focus on the following items. Number one, minutes, consideration of the minutes from the meetings of June sixth, twenty twenty four. A public hearing on Z V A F Y twenty twenty four dash eighteen. Athena Morrissey requests for a special permit under section three point three two one one of the zoning by law to convert a single-family dwelling into a non-owner occupied duplex with a requested waiver from the sign plan at one eighty North May, uh, North Whitney Street. Map eleven D, parcel two sixty one, R G, general residence zoning district. This is continued from May twenty third, twenty twenty four, and there's a pending a request to continue to June eleventh, twenty twenty four. Z V A F Y twenty twenty four dash twenty. Ron Levertier requests for a special permit under sections three point three two five and three point three two one of the zoning by law to construct a five thousand seven hundred and twelve square foot mixed-use building with nine residential units and two first floor commercial spaces, and to construct a raised walkway in the F P C zoning district with a requested waiver from the traffic impact study at three nine five West Street. Map nineteen D, parcel one, R V C Village Center Residence and F P C flown prone conservancy zoning district, continued from our May twenty third, twenty twenty four meeting. Following that, there's a general public comment period on matters not before the board tonight and other business before the board within the last forty eight hours. So the first order of business tonight is consideration of the minutes from the meeting of June sixth, twenty twenty four. Has everybody on the board had a chance to look at those minutes? And are there any suggested changes, modifications, or amendments to those minutes? Once again, uh, these minutes are very robust, very complete. I think they're accurate. Um, and I think they reflect very well the, uh, the meeting that we had on, uh, June sixth. If there's no amendments or suggested changes, I would entertain a motion that we approve the minutes from the June sixth, twenty twenty four meeting. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion. The chair votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
The vote is five to nothing. The minutes from the June sixth meeting are approved. The next order of business is, um, public, public hearings on Z V A F Y twenty twenty four dash eighteen Athena Morrissey. Uh, but we have, and I think you've all received a copy of a letter from, um, her attorney asking for this to be continued to July eleventh, twenty twenty four. Typically, that's, we grant that request, uh, because the, her team can't be here for the meeting this week. If there's no, I would entertain a motion that we approve the continuation to July eleventh, twenty twenty four. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to continue the public hearing on Z V I, Z V A F Y twenty twenty four dash eighteen to July eleventh, twenty twenty four at six o'clock. The chair votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
The motion, uh, passes five to nothing, the motion carries. The next order of business is F Y, uh, Z V A F Y twenty twenty four dash twenty. Ron Levertier, a request for a special permit under sections three point three two five and three point two three one of the zoning by law to construct a five thousand seven hundred square, twelve square foot mixed-use building with nine residential units and two first floor commercial spaces, and to construct a raised walkway in the F P C flood-prone conservation, conservation district with this requested waiver from the traffic impact study at three nine five West Street. Map nineteen D, parcel one, R C Village Center Residence and F P C flood-prone conservancy zoning districts. This is continued from May twenty third, twenty twenty four. Um, the first, I, question is, do any members have any disclosures they wish to make on this matter? All right. If not, the next order is to review the site visit, uh, which we did not do, uh, at the, at the first meeting. Uh, we had a site visit. Uh, I think three of our members were there. Uh, we walked the property. Uh, we met with the, with the applicant. We walked the property. Uh, we viewed the existing built, the existing home that's proposed to be torn down. We observed the, um, elevation of the proposed building and how it slopes into the, 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 uh, the ground moving away from the existing parking area. We observed how the, um, new buildings would be shielded from the existing buildings. We walked along the drive, the current, um, driveway into that area, that part of the ground, which is proposed to be a, um, a bridge, a walking bridge eventually through the conservation and the wetlands. We walked to the back of the property to observe the, um, it's abutting on the Hickory Ridge project and the, um, in the conservation land there. We, um, saw, we, Mr. Levertier showed us, um, his, uh, representation of how he feels the fill will be, will be, um, laid out, will be put on the, on the land and the amount of fill needed, um, for that. And since that time, there's been a, a, a confirmation of, uh, the fill requirements for the property. Um, we've also, we also were, um, asked to, to view the, the, two of the units in the, in the residential units in the property. The basis for that is that they're going to be similar to the residential units that propose to be built. We observed those, met with the current tenant, uh, and observed the bill, uh, inside of the buildings. And then we walked outside, looked at the parking lot, uh, that's between this building, the new, the existing building, the new building that's going to be built and, and the, uh, other existing buildings. Um, and we looked at parking spaces that would be, uh, proposed to be built. Um, I think that is pretty much sums up the, the site visit. Um, Mr. Slovater or Mr. Henry? Is there, you were on the visit with me. Was there anything else you'd like to add?
I think you covered it, Mr. Judge.
Mr. Slovater?
The, the only thing that I would add is that we had, um, we were able to see where the access would be to the new property, that it, that it would join the existing parking area and access from the buildings that are already there, and that access to the new, the new building would go through the, uh, the same access to the complex from the street and then over to the new building. So we saw where the traffic flow will be. That's the only thing. Thank you.
That's a good, good addition. Thank you. Uh, next is to review submissions. Uh, we have received from the applicant, um, an application form, additional form from applicants, a management plan, a complaint response form, a standard lease and floor plans. Uh, floor plans are prepared by Carol Vince, Vince, uh, Architectural Services, dated two twenty three, twenty twenty four. We have floor plans, exterior elevations and, uh, two sets of exterior elevations. We also received revised mixed-use plan set, revised dated six twenty one, twenty twenty four, prepared by S W C A Environmental Consultants. Sheets one through fifteen, which include a cover sheet, existing and proposed conditions, grading and drainage, erosion control plan, landscape plan, foundation planning plans, detail and notes, lighting plan, signage plan, stormwater pre-development plan, stormwater post-development plan, stormwater and construction details, lighting and signing details, typical pedestrian walkway crossing details, and a fire truck turning movement. Um, but we, I had, we did receive one staff submission from the town engineer email dated five, twenty twenty four, stating that he has no concerns with the application. Um, one last point, the applicant's requesting two waivers, a traffic impact study and a parking waiver. So, um, at this point in time, I would ask, uh, who is representing the applicant, Mrs. Levertier? Uh, please, um, identify yourself for the record, your name and address, and people that are going to present for you. And what we'd like to do is, you know, if this could, if you could give us your presentation, you know, fifteen to twenty minutes, something in that range. I know this is an important project for you, and it's a big project. But I think, I think in that timeframe, we might, like, probably cover all the most important aspects of it, and then we can, uh, go to board questions.
I'm Ron Levertier. I live at four thirty-three West Street, Amherst, Massachusetts, which is adjacent to the project. A little bit about Amherst Office Park. I just thought it might be a little history here. It's, uh, my dad had purchased the four forty-one brick building out front in, in the mid seventies. And he renovated that building, and, um, we had some offices in there, as a matter of fact. Um, uh, one, uh, medical, I know, a, uh, medical insurance company started their actual business there. And then he convinced the government to come down, that this would be an appropriate site for the United States Department of Agriculture. Um, and that was the very first office building that we constructed here on site. I was part of that construction team, um, when I was twenty-four, but I wasn't given, uh, very much a responsibility other than the, the wrong end of a shovel. But anyway, uh, you know, and as the years have progressed, uh, the office park here has actually gone from mostly office-based to now about fifty percent office and fifty percent, um, residential. Um, as those need, as the needs of Amherst have changed, we've been slowly adapting, uh, our, our buildings to fit, um, a more residential feel. Um, this is, uh, this building would add nine more residences to the area, and most of the, the rentals that do exist here in Amherst are down in Amherst Office Park are, are young professionals. Um, I understand a lot of the, the students live closer to U Mass, but, um, we actually do not have any students, uh, that go to U Mass. Most of the folks here are young professionals or, you know, they're, they're connected to U Mass as professors. Um, you know, we don't have a lot of turnover here. Um, and I kind of try to build projects that, that I would live in. Um, that's the way I kind of look at it. Uh, if I would live in the unit, then I feel as, oh, that's something I'm proud to rent, proud to build and rent. So most of the units tend to be a little bit larger than what's going on, uh, in the rest of town. But we're also, uh, seeking a slightly different market. Um, the market is, is, you know, as a matter of fact, we just moved in some retirees today. So we have a full mix of people from young professionals to retirees, and, um, uh, that's what we want to continue doing down here. Um, and this was a perfect, uh, spot. It turned out the hap. This was an old hap house that, uh, that the state had rented, and that lease came to, to an end. And the state didn't renew, so we bought the old, the old farmhouse there. It was actually the Matusco House. And, uh, you know, at first, we just sort of cleaned it up and we've rented it, um, while we were waiting for, uh, the market to, uh, to fit. Um, and we went through COVID, and then we went through this hot, high inflationary period. So really needed to wait until the, um, you know, a lot of the building materials sort of settled back to what I call a more reasonable price. And for instance, that would be, um, you know, two by six by tens had risen, had gone all the way up into the twenty-something dollars apiece, and now they're back down around nine dollars apiece. And I feel as though, you know, by watching my numbers, I can supply a quality product to, you know, the folks that rent from me at a reasonable price, and that's one of my goals. Um, it's not just to maximize the dollar, but also to provide a service to the folks that live here and provide high-quality housing. So we, we sat down with S W C A, uh, Tony Summers, and, uh, we started working on a plan. That went, you know, sort of back and forth until we finally found a building that fit nicely on the land, sort of settled into the slopes of the land. And we had discussions with, um, the Conservation Commission about removing the driveway completely out and reconnecting the wetlands on the lower section, um, which was, you know, which was received quite well by the Conservation Commission, but also felt though a pedestrian, uh, connection to the town sidewalks was, was appropriate, and, uh, as you can see, on the east side of the project. And then, you know, we started with designing the building and then coming up with, um, first, we just came up with nine apartments, um, and we were moving in that direction for a while. But what I was noticing during COVID was so many, so many people were looking to, to have an office at home. And the one complaint I heard over and over is they, they don't want to bring somebody through their house to go to their office all the time. So I started coming up with the concept that if we had a two-bedroom unit that could either be used as a two bedrooms, or it could be used as a one bedroom in an office with two separate doors, I was going to, I was going to satisfy people that wanted to have that home office and work from home and not have to travel all the time for work. And I could also, um, it could also be used as a two-bedroom, or if you had a teenager that wanted a little bit more access in and out of their own bedroom, uh, would suffice as that kind of thing. Um, so kind of fit with the world's going, and so, um, I, we came up with this design and we worked, uh, diligently with soils engineers, and we worked with the fire department on the turnaround. And we ended up falling, you know, falling one parking spot short. But I didn't think that was, uh, as, I didn't think that was a big issue because when we built the four seventeen building, the planning board at that time had requested that I do counts on the building to determine, uh, in a mixed use, if, if there was more parking than was needed. And in the four seventeen building, we, we always had anywhere from fifteen to twenty open spots available in a mixed-use building. Um, so the feeling was that, that being adjoined to this, uh, the two sites together, that having twenty-three of the twenty-four spots would, uh, would certainly suffice for the needs of this building. Um, and the second thing I'm asking is the, the traffic impact study. Um, one of the things that started about five years ago on Friday afternoons on traffic flowing north to south on one sixteen, when we had a traffic light there. Occasionally, the traffic would back up across two of the three entrances that we have at Amherst Office Park. So that's, you know, traffic was a little, was starting to get noticeable if you were trying to get out and, you know, traffic was just stopped in front of you. And, uh, town invested, uh, quite a bit of money in the, in the rotary. And the rotary has been an unbelievable success. I, I will say this, I was actually a little skeptical of rotaries. But when they did the Atkins Rotary, I was actually shocked how well it worked. And, uh, this one works equally as well. So we have never had, uh, stop traffic in front of us. So also when they, when the rotary was put in, um, the crosswalks were put in with, with, with stop, uh, stop buttons and signs. So that is, uh, that has really improved the, the natural, um, biped flow around the, around the South Amherst Center here, and it's, it's, I think, really done a nice job. Um, so that's a little bit of an overview, but the, the, the concept really of people having the ability to use their second bedroom as an office, I think, uh, is, is definitely something that's moving, is moving the needle nationwide. And I'd like this, you know, I mean, beyond this, this one little project, I'd like to see more of that in Amherst because if your office is at home, you don't have to get in a car to go to it or a bus. You can just walk over. Um, and that's where the second door, um, to each of these unit, each six of these units, uh, was, was conceived, and I just wanted to make sure you understood what I was thinking. Um, but I think it's a, you know, it, and it's going to be a bit of a test model to see because a lot of the, you know, people say, oh, yeah, 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 I'd love to have an office at home, but I don't want to bring people through my house. I, you know, I'm kind of guessing that, you know, they said it, but is it really true? I mean, you know, once the building's built, I'll find out how many people actually do use that second bedroom as an office. Um, I'm gonna certainly advertise it that way. But, you know, and down here, we don't get a lot of the roommate roommate. Um, in, in our rentals so far, we have twenty-nine residential units here, and they're, um, a lot of the young professionals, well, actually, uh, or young couples will actually rent um, a two-bedroom unit, and, uh, they, they just rented it and keep it as, keep that second bedroom as a guest bedroom or as their, you know, a little private office. So, I mean, so far, or families, for instance, we do have a Cambodian family here that is, uses a two-bedroom, and, you know, they're quite happy, although they would like a little more space. But I guess that's the, I, you know, I'd like to hear some questions if, if you've got any.
You know, I, I think it'd be helpful if, um, we'd have either Mr. Summers or Mr. Marcus just review the, the one issue that wasn't clear at the time of the site visit was the fill because there was originally a thought that it exceeded, um, the amount you could get with a special permit. You'd have needed a waiver, I think. Um, or a variance. You need, you need some, it's special permission to, to use the fill, which was more than would have been permitted under, under normal circumstances. I understand that that's been, uh, you looked at that, that you'd come in under the rules, but tell us what happened, and before you do that, give us your, give us your name and address for the record.
Tony, do you want to address the fill and the sheet that goes with that?
Tony Summers, uh, fifteen Research Drive in New Amherst is S W C office. And so here we were looking at, um, based on the existing and proposed grades, um, where we were, um, had an average of greater than two foot, two feet of fill and greater than five feet of fill. Uh, the greater than two foot to four point nine nine is represented in the yellow hatch. The, uh, more than five feet is, um, indicated by the orange. Uh, the orange, the reason there's, um, tends to be more filled there is primarily because right along this side, uh, there is a retaining wall, and so that is, uh, the back fill for that area, and then there is a detention basin in then, in that area as well. Um, other, um, other, um, primary fill areas tend to be right along, um, where there's birmingham for the detention basins. Um, because of the grades, there needs to be a step down, and because we couldn't cut down lower in, uh, into existing grade, we built up on the backside. And so that's also where a lot of that, uh, fill is coming from, for those, for those basins.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I'm just going to quickly summarize some of the, um, other points for this application.
Just give us your name and address, Mr. Marcus.
Uh, Mickey Marcus. I live at, um, eight Lady Slipper Circle in Amherst. Uh, I've been the environmental consultant, uh, with Mr. Levertier on this project and, uh, previous projects and very familiar with, with the site. Uh, Tony, would you mind just looking at the existing conditions for just a moment? So there, there's, uh, as, as already mentioned, this is, uh, there's a, uh, small, uh, four-bedroom house that's on the property, unoccupied, built, uh, mid nineteen fifties. So as part of this project, uh, that will be demolished. Um, Tony, if you can go to the, I'm sorry, back to the site plan. So there, there are two, um, special permit issues. One is, um, for the home office on two of the apartments, and the second is the F P C work, and I'd like to just, you know, I think, uh, Mr. Levertier, address the apartments, and just so you're clear, there's nine total apartments that are proposed. There are two one-bedroom apartments. There are four two-bedroom apartments. There are two, two-bedroom apartments that have home office, and then there's one four-bedroom apartment, nine total. Uh, the, the office, uh, the, the, the two, uh, two bedrooms that have the office will be on the first floor. Um, the, so that, that was one of the reasons for the special permit. The second, uh, Tony, can you zoom in on that crossing area? We, 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 um, met quite a bit, uh, pre-permitting with, uh, Aaron and the Conservation Commission members just to review the project and come up with plans, and this, if, in your site visit, you saw that this area that And this, if, in your site visit, you saw that this area that's in light blue is an existing driveway. That is, uh, to be abandoned, so the driveway gets pulled up. The wetlands on either side, uh, get reconnected, there's a culvert. That gets re- uh, removed, um, so this is in, uh, the flood. Pro Conservancy District, it's actually not in a hundred year floodplain, a hundred year floodplain is the area, uh, just, um, to the north. Um, so it's, it's one of these areas where the flood prone Conservancy and the hundred year floodplain don't align. But it is part of the flood prone Conservancy, so, um, what's proposed here is, um. Removing, uh, the pave, uh, the, the driveway pavement, uh, and putting in, um, a walking path. And this walking path is on helical pier, so it's, it's above the ground and it's, the idea is to provide. Uh, pedestrian access from West Street, uh, onto the property and right now, um. What we're, what I understand is that a lot of people, uh, use the existing driveway to access Hickory Hills and so. They'll have that continued access, so that's the work proposed, there's no fill, it's actually removal of fill and, um. The new work is a boardwalk and it does have the.
Oh, you've muted yourself, Mister Marcus.
Sorry, the, the, uh, the boardwalk does have lighting associated with that, that's shown on the site plans. Um, the, um. We talked about the, the traffic impact study that there were two waivers, one was traffic impact study, the second is a parking waiver. Uh, Mister Summers had had originally designed the site with twenty-four parking spaces, but after, uh, discussions with. Uh, the fire department, uh, modifications were needed for the turnaround for the. Hook and ladder truck that's shown in yellow, that removed one parking space, uh, what Mister Laverdy is suggesting is that, um. There is plenty of additional parking spaces available in adjacent parking areas that always seem to have. Open spaces, um. We talked about the fill, um. Just wanted to say, uh, there's a stormwater plan, it's a very extensive, uh, low impact development, stormwater plan. Using, uh, persious asphalt and a whole series of these rain gardens that's been. Was reviewed quite a bit by the Conservation Commission, that all those green areas are just sort of a cascading, uh, infiltration for stormwater. Um, that, uh, Jason Skills has also reviewed, um, this plan, um. Should say, there's a lot of, uh, landscape improvements, there's over a half acre of invasive species removal. Replanting with native vegetation, so, uh, Mister, uh, Summers, who's the landscape architect, developed a whole. Planting plan using native plants, so the idea is to green up the site, improve stormwater, uh, as well. Uh, so I think that's all I'll say right now, take any. Any questions, we'll all take questions that the board members have. Thank you for the time.
Before we go to questions, uh, Ms. Breschrup, you have your hand raised.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify something, um, that, um. Mister Marcus said, in, in the past, we've had a requirement for, um, a special permit for home occupations. Um, in this case, we don't have a special permit for home occupations, instead what we have is a special permit. For a mixed use building in the RVC zoning district, so that may have been a little confusing, I just wanted to clarify that. So this whole building, which normally, if it were in the downtown area, would be, um, before the planning board for site plan review. Because this is in the RVC zoning district, it's required to have a special permit. Um, but there is not, no longer that requirement for a home occupation to have a special permit. Um, so just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I did have one question, um, can you just blow this up a little bit, what we see on the screen? And I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the area where there's the, sort of the curved driveway, at what I would call the front of the building. Not the porch, but right where you're, yeah, where you're. Is that, is, where are the two? Two bedroom with office or where are the offices located, which, which side of the building are the offices located?
The offices are located right, if you look at the building from, uh, from this entrance. They're right where the, left of where it says Water Main Entrance and right of the Water Main Entrance. So it's that front quarter of the building when you drive in.
All right, so those are the non, so that, that's where the non residential space would be. That's the, um, potentially the office space that can be accessed directly from the, this outdoors, right? You don't, that's what you're looking at.
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you. I don't have a lot of other questions, I think. In terms of this, um. My questions regarding the fill seems to have been answered and I note that there's no, that it's been, um, also reviewed. With the order conditioned by the, um, Conservation Commission. And so I think the flood, the implications for the flood prone Conservancy District have been, um, addressed. By the other body in town that, uh, works on this. Um, and I understand your, your request regarding. The request you're making regarding parking, we can discuss that as well. But are there, do other board members have questions for the applicant?
I, I have a question, Mister Chair, but it's not for the applicant, it's actually for Mister Mora.
Go ahead.
Um, Mister Morris, see that you're here, are there any concerns, um, not addressed by the applicant that the zoning board should consider?
Uh, there, there are no concerns, um, you know, staff has reviewed the project in great detail with the applicant and and familiar with it and. Supportive of the project, um, I, I will point out that there's a. A determination that the board needs to make regarding the. Uh, the location of the non residential space and I know, uh, Mister Judge is familiar with that and we probably talked about that, bringing that up at some point. But that's, that's the only unusual, uh, uh, piece of the application that just needs to be talked about a little bit.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Uh, Miss Breschrup, I see your hand is up.
Oh. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to have my hand up.
Okay. All right. No questions from board members. Um, it's a time for, you know, if there's another, anything else that the applicant wants to, to, uh. Describe or discuss, it would, I would then turn it to public comment. I note that we've had no public comments submitted to the, uh, the board prior to the. Beginning of the, uh, of the meeting tonight, uh, so if people wish to comment on this, if there's anybody who wishes to comment on this. Um, I'd ask staff to help me identify them, if you do wish to comment and you are called upon, please give us your name and address. For the record, keep your comments for about three minutes and make sure your comments are addressed to the board. So, um, do we have anybody? Who wishes to speak to this issue in the public? You know, I, I don't see anybody. Janet, do you?
I have three attendees, but they are, they have not raised their hand.
Right. Okay. If there's no public comment. Uh, it's a last chance for board members to ask questions or for the, the applicant to make any further presentations to the board. If not, um, I would entertain a motion that we. Uh, move to public hearing on this, a public meeting on this application while keeping the public hearing open. So that we can, uh, deliberate on the matter. So a motion to move to a public meeting. While keeping the public hearing open in case we wish to gather additional information, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion on that motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. The chair votes aye, Mister Meadows?
Aye.
Mister Slaveter?
Aye.
Mister Henry?
Aye.
Mister White?
Aye.
The motion is approved five to nothing, uh, we'll now go into a public meeting on this application. Public meeting is generally where the board deliberates, um, it discusses their general feelings about the matter. They then will then review the conditions, the findings and make a recommend and. Uh, and perhaps dispose of this one way or the other tonight, um, generally is not a time for public comments. So, um. I guess I'd begin by saying that, um, we spent a lot of time on our site visit, I understand, I. The, uh, the project here pretty well and I think the other two members felt comfortable with the amount of information we had, whether. It's dispositive, if you're feeling towards the project or not is another thing, but we got a lot of, we got real good, uh, look at the property and the idea that. The applicant has, it seems to make sense, it's in an area where, from my standpoint, I think it adds to the neighborhood. It's consistent in every respect, even to the extent of the same type of architectural detail. It's going to be consistent throughout the property and, um, it's, it's an interesting concept that I think Mister Laverdy has, uh. Has proposed here of, uh, making home offices a little bit more, um. Accessible or more easily, uh, used by people that they wish to have that, uh, so. I'm inclined to approve this, I think there is one issue which, when we get to the, um, the findings, we'll have to discuss and that issue is. Um, and I'll, I'll try to, it's, it's arcane, but I'll try to describe it and then I'll ask Mister Mora or Mister Breschrup to. Correct me when I describe it incorrectly, but typically, you would. The, in this building, it would require that thirty percent, um, no more than thirty percent of the. Of the, um, first floor or ground floor. Property faces the, that is non residential, faces, this is confusing. There's a, the goal is to have the non residential property face the street and it is that thirty percent. At least thirty percent of the square footage has to be non residential facing the street. In this case, the street facing part of this building is two hundred and fifty-one feet from West Street. It doesn't, in, in the intent, of course, was to create, the bylaw was to create a sense of mixed use. Uh, for the, the, uh, the building, that there's, you could see the mixed use from the streetscape. You're not gonna see a lot of the streetscape from the street facing. Uh, frontage of this building and you're more likely to, when you approach this building from, especially when you're driving, you're gonna approach it from. The turnaround in the front where the office buildings are. And so I think the intent of the bylaw was to provide the, um, sense of, of. Of commercial space or non residential space being in the front and easily accessible, that people can see that. Um, and in this case, I think that's, that is accomplished, even though. The bylaw, um. Require, the bylaw requires that it face that percentage from the street, which is two hundred and fifty-one feet away. The Special Permit Granting Authority has the ability to, to modify that. And that is one of the things that we've asked for here in this special permit application. Is that we have to make a finding later on that, um. This. That, that we are, we allow this variance, not, not the technical term, but a waiver from that provision to be. Included in the, the special permit, so that's the item that Mister Mora mentioned. As might be concerning, uh, something we should discuss. I'm not bothered by it, I think it makes sense and I think it fulfills the intent of the bylaw, and I think exactly why we're here for, to use our. Matters, but, uh, Mister Mora, did I, did I bundle it too much or did I kind of get the right idea out there?
Yeah, yeah, you, you, you got the right idea, I just want to clarify a couple of things, so it's, uh, it's the thirty percent of the non residential. Portion of the building occupying the first floor, so that's the one, uh, piece of criteria that. Isn't satisfied, uh, uh, exactly by this proposal because some of the office. Uh, space and non residential space is on the floor below. So it's just acknowledging that, uh, it's a split between the two floors and the bylaw allows the board to accept that. Uh, and then the other piece is that, uh, the non residential space, uh, is, is not necessarily predominantly. Facing the street, um, given the orientation of the building, so again, this isn't waiver request or. Uh, any special approval needed, it's just the board acknowledging that they found. That the criteria has been satisfied, given the, the specifics of this proposal.
The other item that is here is, is the parking, uh, the parking weight, not, uh, exception. Um, generally require twenty-four, there's twenty-three provided here. You know, from a site visit, it's clear to me that there's more than enough parking in this area to accommodate the additional, um. Residential and, and non, and commercial and non residential. Tenants, uh, and the existence of the old traffic, parking study seems to prove that out, so. I think that we're, I, I have no, I have no trouble with the ability of the, uh, to, of this plan to meet the parking needs of the area. And of the development. Um, I guess there's other, other members, that's my inclination, uh, other members have a feeling or a question about this, Mister Slaveter?
Well, um, wait, let me make sure I'm not muted, okay. Uh, yes, I have a, a few comments to address some of the things that have come up. Um, first of all, I, I was at the site visit and I felt that the design. Of the proposed building is so consistent in. In appearance and feel to the buildings that are already there. That this almost seems like an expansion of an existing project, doesn't feel like a new or novel. Uh, application, I know it is, but it, it fits in well. Uh, I don't consider the parking to be an issue of one space, that seems, uh. Chair commented on that and I want to reinforce that, there's adequate parking. The requirement that the non residential. Uh, space face the street. It seems to me that, that the intention of that is that the commercial part is, uh. Is more aligned with the trafficked and developing part of the, of the site. Which actually in this case is facing the parking and it's facing the access by which anyone will. Reach the new building, so I think that that is consistent with intent. The. We went into a unit and I was, I didn't care that much one way or the other about the unit that we visited because I didn't think. That Mister Laverdyer was going to take us into one that was a dump with unhappy tenants. Who were complaining. But what did impress me was the general condition of the interior of the building. The corridors, the staircases, also the grounds and the parking. The existing buildings that are under his ownership and management seem well maintained and cared for. Nothing is shabby, nothing was calling out to be repaired, there wasn't chipped paint in the corridors. All the little things that would call attention to something that's neglected. It seems that the record of this developer. Hates him as a responsible one and I find that this proposal, that what they want to do here. Is consistent with everything that makes sense. The design, even the return of wetlands. Um, I, Mister Laverdyer referred ear- earlier to bipeds. Crossing the street, I hope that quadrupeds are also allowed. To cross the street and walk on the path. I don't know that I'll be bringing my dogs, but I don't, you know, I think bipeds and quadrupeds coexist well, so. I'm, I'm, I feel quite positive about this application and think that he has answered. All of the questions responsibly and I intend to support it. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mister Slaveter. Any other comments, um, or concerns?
I, I, I think I share Mister Slaveter's position, um, having been on the site visit, my initial impression was that. This is just an addition to what's already there, um, everything that was presented seems to complement. What is there, it's just, um, like Mrs. Slaveter said, this seems like just next. It's just like Mrs. Slaveter said, this seems like just an expansion. And again, appreciated Mr. Moore's perspective. I have no reservations and I will support this.
Any further comments? If not, what I'd like to do is go, oh, go ahead, Mr. Henry.
Mr. White has his hand up.
Oh, Mr. White, I didn't see. Go ahead.
You're fine? No, so I would just state, my concerns going into this were pretty common to what, you know, they would be in a situation like this, you know, issues about proximity to wetland, infill, you know, our kind of usual cast of characters. But after having reviewed everything here, and of course, you're relying on everyone on the board who was able to be at the site visit, I would agree with kind of everyone here. I feel like due diligence has been done and I feel comfortable supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. White. If there's no further comments, what I'd like to do is go through conditions. I like to do those first because they, those conditions sometimes directly affect our ability to make the findings we're required to make. Sometimes they're indeed responsible for us being able to make findings. So I'd like to go through the proposed conditions in the project application report. And I find what the staff has provided in this case and was one addition that I suggested earlier today, that's reflected in the most recent draft, I approve of the conditions. The first is project use mixed use residential. Condition one just says it has to be built, in effect, just says it has to be built to plan. Condition two, the building shall not exceed maximum three stories. Condition, which it doesn't. Condition three, again, the plan is that some mixed use buildings shall not be changed throughout the residential use, including a private dormitory. Condition four, property shall not be used for temporary short-term housing, short-term lodging or advertised as such in print or electronically. Apartment should be rented by unit, not by the bed, with a maximum of one lease for each unit at any time. All approvals and conditions granted by the Amherst Conservation Commission shall be in effect and adhered to as part of the special permit. Number seven, the units at the project shall be registered and permitted in accordance with the Amherst residential property by law. Number eight is a new provision that we've been using for a couple of years, where on the applicant shall provide an up-to-date complaint and violation log with the Amherst Inspection Services and filed prior to the annual application for the residential rental registration. Number nine deals with the, that it has to be managed substantially in accordance with the management plan. Ten deals with substantial changes and/or substantial changes to any approved site plans. These are all pretty standard going to the zoning board of appeal for review prior to the work taking place. The minimus can be handled by the building commissioner. Landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the landscape plan. Special permits shall expire within two years, the date that it was filed with town clerk. And all work associated with the project shall be completed within thirty months from the date of the issuance of the building permit. The building exterior site improvements, these are again, pretty much conditions and requirements of both the, the construction crew as well as the town commit, as a building commissioner. So for inspection, onsite utilities shall be underground. Exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant, domcast and shielded and not shine onto adjacent properties or streets. Air conditioning units shall be shielded. All utility work within the public right of way shall be conducted with regulations of the Town of Amherst. All work with the right of way shall be reviewed by the town council. The applicant shall provide at the zoning board of appeals and public meetings specifications for any amenities such as bike racks, site furniture, playground and benches for review and approval prior to installation. Number twenty-one, work within the right of way. Delivered disturbance during construction shall be completed by the applicant at all costs. Approval prior to the issuance of a final certificate. Management plan provides for trash pickup. The management plan provides, the project shall also be managed in accordance with the terms of the management plan. Again, you gotta, you gotta do what's in your management plan is essentially what we're saying there. Construction, these are a series of conditions that are pretty standard for any larger construction project that we've seen. Everything from time of building to when you have to contact the fire chief, washing tires. I don't want to run through all of this, all of these construction. So that's conditions twenty-four through thirty-five. These are ones we see all the time for, for projects in the town. Completion of work, but if anybody has a question about those, raise them at the end of the discussion here today. Completion of the work, you provide as-built plans that show building locations, grade, accessways, sidewalks and walkways, curving, stormwater, management lighting facilities of the building commissioner and town engineer, which are placed in special permit files. Again, we're going to, the plan you have is the plan you have to build it by unless you seek change either from the, and approve that change either from the building commissioner or from us, if it should rise to us. As part of the as-built plans, the applicant shall include and confirm the fill amounts as in the as-built plans. And finally, the fill should not substantially exceed the amount shown on sheet sixteen point zero average fill height calculations. CAD CAM plans are required for final review. Thirty forty deals with temporary certificates of occupants, which shall be approved by the building commissioner. The building commissioner may impose security requirements. Forty, forty, the new forty-two is prior to starting any site work. The building commissioner and the applicant shall provide, the building commissioner with stormwater pollution prevention plan to address specific sedimentation, a list of written procedures that outline operation and maintenance measures for the stormwater drainage facilities. The forty-three, the final certificate of occupants, which shall not be issued for the building until the final top coat is laid, landscaping is shown, has been installed and a complete as-built plan has been submitted to the building commissioner and town engineer by all professional designs for the site constructed and approved by the building commissioner and the town engineer. Those are the conditions. Were there any concerns about the conditions as in the project application report? Were there any additional conditions members want to propose?
Mr. Meadows has his hand raised.
Oh, Mr. Meadows, thank you. I'm finding that people up in the upper corner here, I'm having a hard time seeing.
I don't know how I got up there.
Yeah, you're at the top of our list, Mr. Meadows.
A question for Mr. Moore, because I failed to look it up earlier. Does, does this not fall in with the number of units in the parking such that there must be EV parking charging stations for this number of units in this amount of parking area, state requirement?
I believe that this will require the, the EV charging under the new specialized code.
And I, I didn't see any charging stations in the plan yet.
Didn't note any either.
No, I don't, I don't think they've identified the space, but it would, it would take over one of the existing parking spaces that are shown in the layout. There, there wouldn't be an additional space provided or changes to the site plan.
Correct.
So that would be required, that EV station would be required under state law?
That's right. Yes, under the, under the, the new, the new state energy code and the town's adoption of the specialized code, specialized code to the expansion of the stretch code.
So we wouldn't need to have a condition specifically requiring that EV station, it would be done as a matter of your office making sure that they comply with this town by law, the new law and the state law, right?
Yes, during, during plan review and permitting, building permit phase, you know, that'll have to be identified, you know, the, everything from the conduit to the location of where it's going to terminate. And the service information will all be detailed in the construction documents prior to permitting.
Got it.
I thought I read somewhere that there were four EV stations planned in there. I thought I read something to that effect.
Mr. Marcus does have his hand up possibly. He's.
Is this in direct response to the issue that has been, been raised or is? If that's the case, then you can speak, Mr. Marcus.
I had another issue, but I think Mr. Levertier can address the existing EV charging stations that are on the property.
Mr. Levertier, can you address the existing EV parking? Oh, you're muted, Mr. Levertier.
Have to unmute.
Oh, you're muted.
There you go. Presently, we have two charging stations onsite. And we're working towards putting another three charging stations onsite. My question is, since Amherst Office Park is sort of a, an entity in itself of, of now, this will be one more building, so it would be eight buildings. Would it be possible to just consider that we're now up to five charging stations, each with two heads, so we'd be up to ten heads onsite? And rather than, you know, and consider that as an all encompassing for this, for the eight buildings? And I guess that's a question for Ron.
I don't know how that calculation has been done. Mr. Meadows or Mr. Moore, do you know?
I, I don't, I don't have all that information from me, but we can certainly review that. If it, if it complies with the state energy code, then it would become a possibility unless the board had another specific condition related to its proximity to the new building.
Mr. Meadows, I guess the question is for you, of you, is it important that there be a condition requiring that these EV stations be close to the new building or if there's enough in the parking lot to satisfy a need in the state law?
If there's enough in the parking area to satisfy the state laws, then that's, that's good. Obviously, there's money available through the state and national grid so that, to help pay for those things, so.
Great. Any other questions, concerns from board members regarding the conditions? And I will then just see if Mr. Marcus has a quick point to make, but if we have no other questions from the board members.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, one of the things I neglected to mention was that there was an additional permit that was granted for this building by Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program. And one thing, just to be consistent, on condition on number six, where you say that the plans need to be adhered to by the Conservation Commission, you may want to just also just add, and natural heritage, conditions by Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program. They, they, they are requiring that there's a turtle protection plan be put in place during construction. And so that's already been reviewed and approved by commission, the Conservation Commission, but it's, it is a separate entity that create some additional conditions.
Marcus, so does, I am not familiar, or maybe Ms. Brestrop, I'm not that familiar with the specifics of the Conservation Commission order, but does it reference the, the provision of Mr. Marcus is discussed? And do we need to have a, a second reference to it if it is so referenced? If not, I think we can leave it as it is.
I don't think you need a separate reference to it, because it stands, it stands as, you know, if, if that was required by the Conservation Commission, then it will be required and they will enforce it.
Yep, we don't need to.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you though. All right, unless there's any questions or any amendments to the conditions, I would entertain a motion that we approve the conditions as contained in the project application report revised June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, conditions one through forty-three. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the conditions contained in the project application report. The chair votes aye. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
The vote was five, nothing. The motion to approve the conditions has passed. We now need to go to the findings we have to make under, for this application. And I'm going to turn to the zoning bylaw review. Where under section three point three, three point two two eight, and specifically through three point two three one, there are, in a flood-prone conservancy, the special, the planning board or the special permit granting authority has to make, has to find that the proposal, the application assures protection of drainage, elevation of buildings, adequacy of sewer and refuge disposal, controls of erosion, location of equipment, storage of buoyant material, extended paving, extent of fill, storage of chemicals, et cetera. And I think that we should note and acknowledge that the Conservation Commission, to a large extent, has done this. And in addition, the construction requirements in the conditions that we just approved also address this, this, these issues. And that the findings that we can acknowledge that we, that this application meets the findings requirements under section three point two two eight through three point two three one. And unless there's any, any opposition or question regarding that, we can move on to the next findings. The next findings, we can, we'll note that all the, all the dimensional regulations are met. We need, under mixed use buildings, this is what we generally discussed before regarding the, the street frontage. The, this is a one, this is allowed under the RVC zoning district. And that the, the, generally, the intent of this three point three two five mixed use development building and its requirements for street facing, et cetera, has been met by the proposal put before us in the applicant today. On parking, the, under the requirement, I, I have no problem with twenty-three as opposed to twenty-four parking spaces. I think there's more than enough. And so I think we can say that the parking requirements have been, have been confined, that the parking requirements of the bylaw have been met with this and our ability to vary those parking requirements based upon the conditions at, on the site. Let's see, the last use of the findings for the flood plain development of the board. Oh, we have to make a, they're asking for a special, contains a special permit on the boardwalk. Again, that's section three point two two eight and section three point two three one. Factors listed in the zoning bylaw and that the zone, this has been approved by the Conservation Commission. And we've made the findings, I think specifically, that we make the findings that the application meets the requirements of the flood-prone conservancy district required under the bylaw. Lastly, we have section ten point three eight findings that we have to make under every special permit application. Ten point three eight zero and ten point three eight one, it's assumed that we located in the neighborhood which is proposed. I think it is, it's, it seems like an extension of a current building. Ten point three eight two, three eight three, three eight five, three eight seven. We have to find that this proposal would not constitute a nuisance for water pollution, flood noise, order, dust, vibration, lights, or vehicular materials. I think we can say with confidence that the, that it meets the requirements to make this finding, especially with the addition of non, of domcast lighting and, and the, the screening. Ten point three eight four, appropriate facilities provided by the, for the proper operation of the proposed use. Everything from the construction to the parking, I think, provides adequate and appropriate facilities. The proposal ensures that conformance of parking sign regulations. We've already approved the twenty-three places, or we've indicated that we, there's no problem with twenty-three rather than twenty-four spaces. Ten point three eight seven was already dealt with up in ten, the first or second group of findings. It deals with convenient and safe vehicular traffic. And I think that's particularly true in the removing of the driveway and making that into pedestrian walkway and with several different entrances onto West Street from the property. There is no need for a traffic plan or for a traffic, a traffic impact study. And it does provide safe and, traffic for, safe and convenient for, traffic for vehicular as well as pedestrian uses. Ten point three eight nine provides adequate message of disposal for sewage abstinence. Ten point three eight nine provides adequate methods of disposal for sewage or refuge. The management plan deals with that sufficiently. Ten point three nine zero deals with the protection from flood hazards as stated in section three point two two eight. Again, this has been looked at by the CONCOM. They have order of conditions which they've made. And I think we can find that they, that, and the construction details that we have in the special permit conditions will mitigate any, any effect, adverse effect on flood hazards. And, or, and meet the requirements of ten point three nine zero. Ten point three nine one deals with unique or important natural historic scenic features, it's not, obviously, it meets the requirement here. Ten point three nine two, proposal provides adequate landscaping, including, and we reviewed the landscape plan and the vegetation and the screening, especially for existing buildings. I think it meets those requirements. Ten point three nine three deals with adjacent properties, minimizing intrusion of lighting, exterior lighting through cutoffs luminaries. In the lighting plan is downcast and dark sky compliant. Proposal avoids impact on steep slopes. Again, this is, the CONCOM has dealt with this and it's their, they have more knowledge and expertise on this area. But I think we can, can, because of their approval and their order, their orders, we can find, make this finding. Ten point three nine five does not create disharmony within the terrain or the architecture of the district. I mean, it's, it's strikingly similar to the other buildings. I think it meets the requirement of ten point three nine five. Three nine six, again, provides for screening of storage areas. The, I think this is met by the, the site plan. Ten point three nine seven provides adequate recreational and open space facilities. There's ample open space for activities on the site. Ten point three nine eight, proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw and the goals of the master plan. Again, it provides a mixed-use residential building in a resident, village-centered residential neighborhood. It's in line with purposes of the zoning bylaw as well as the master plan. Are there any questions regarding the, the findings? If not, I'd like to have a motion that we make the findings required under those sections that I just enumerated. And I don't want to have to go through all of them again. So do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Everybody wants to be done with that. All right, two, we got two motions, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the findings that the board makes the findings required as outlined under the staff project application report. The chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
The vote is five to nothing. The motion passes to make the findings required and contained in the project application report. The last issue is, should we, do we approve the special permit application? And I would entertain a motion that we approve ZBA twenty twenty-four dash twenty, request for a special permit under section three point three two five, mixed-use building, and three point two two, flood-prone conservancy district of the zoning bylaw to construct a five thousand seven hundred and twelve square foot mixed-use building with nine residential units, two first-floor commercial spaces, a raised walkway in the FPC zoning district, and two waivers, one from the traffic impact study and a parking waiver. And at the same time, that we close the public hearing on this matter.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Chris and Rob, have I hit all the needed items for a full approval of the special permit?
I think so. Does Mr. Mora agree?
I agree.
All right. In that case, the vote, unless there's any discussion, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the special permit application at for the Amherst, Amherst Office Park. The chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
The vote is five to nothing. The most, the special permit application is approved. Mr. Laverrier, congratulations, good luck. I think you have a really interesting concept and I hope you do very well with it.
Thank you very much, and I hope so too.
Thank you all for your time and efforts, very much appreciated.
Yes, thank you very much.
The next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. If members of the public wish to speak on any matter except those before the board tonight, they may do so by raising their hand, using the raised hand function on Zoom or pressing star nine on their phone. When, if anybody wishes to speak and wishes to be recognized, when recognized, please state your name and address for the records. We have three attendees, no hands that I see. How about you, Jennifer? Ms. Mullins? Nothing?
No.
That being the case, no public comment. The next order of business is old, is, is new business, not anticipated within, prior to the last forty-eight hours. Is there any new business other than scheduling, which we can discuss with Ms. Brestrop for the, the upcoming meetings?
No new business, other than scheduling.
Yeah, let's just run through the schedule for the next couple of meetings if we could. Ms. Brestrop, do you have those handy or?
Yep, we just get it off the wall here.
Boy, that means that you're always thinking about it, so you have it up on your.
I look at it all the time, yep. So you have a meeting on July eleventh. Mathena Morrissey will be coming back for one eighty North Whitney Street. Jonathan Clayton will be coming back for forty-seven Red Gate Lane. And then you have a new application for the Black Walnut Inn. They're essentially asking to continue doing what they've been doing, but under a new owner. And they're asking to have their site plan approved, which reflects what exists there now. So that's coming on July eleventh. And then July twenty-fifth, you have, did you have any questions about that?
No.
Okay. July twenty-fifth, you have Shrewsbury Road Solar coming back. There's a new application for Lane Quarry at fifteen fifty West Street, which is in the notch. And they just want to continue doing what they're doing, so they want to renew their special permit. And then you have a special permit application for the Spoke. And this one is the Spoke that's along East Pleasant Street, not the one that's on Prey Street. So they want to make some improvements to their outdoor patio area. And then we're trying to get KP Law to come and talk to you on August twenty-second about legal aspects of solar permitting. And that was something I think Mr. Meadows suggested. So we're going to try to schedule that for August twenty-second. And other than that, I think that's it. We, we do have a meeting scheduled for August eighth, but so far we don't have anything on the agenda for that night.
You know, we might want to be a little flexible on that August, that late August meeting. That's a pretty important, I, first of all, I would like to make sure if people are going to be here at that time who serve on that Shrewsbury panel. That's a pretty important meeting to, to outline the state law that also governs, not only solar fields, but what we can do, our ability and our discretion under state law. So, Mr. Meadows and Mr. Slaveter, you were on that panel. Mr. Henry, are you on that panel as well?
I am.
The four of us are on that panel.
Yeah, it is, it is possible that I will be out of town, but I think I'll be able to take some time away for the meeting.
Other people have travel plans for that date? I think I'm good as well.
No, I, I have nothing. I expect to be good unless Philip speaks to President Biden and I get an invitation to do something that night. But short, short of being asked for advice by the president, I expect to be here. Philip and I will be at the White House, okay? We can't make.
I don't think Mr. Henry had the pleasure of hearing about Mr. White's upcoming meeting.
No.
What'd I miss?
Ah, ah.
Congratulations, I have now been appointed to be the new President of the United States.
Yeah, I don't think you want that job.
No, 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 I don't. No, my better half and I have the honor of meeting the president tomorrow, so.
Oh, very nice, congratulations.
Really cool.
I thought you were in Ireland.
Not anymore, I'm a world traveler, no.
Only his background.
No.
Yeah. Well, you'll, he's a genuinely nice man. You'll enjoy meeting, he really is. Yep. All right, I think, you know, that's a pretty big new business that one of our members is sitting down with the president tomorrow. It's not every night that we have that. It's a ZBA item on our new business list, so Mr. White, enjoy that immensely. That's, that's really cool. If there's any other business, new business that members have, we entertain them at this point. If not, I intend to finish before we call, go for our normal seven-thirty break. And I'd like to do that at this point. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, we adjourn. This is not debatable. And the motion, the vote occurs on the motion to adjourn. The chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Slaveter?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
And Mr. White? From meeting, in your preparation, meeting with the president. Thank you much, all. The motion carries. We are adjourned. Have fun with that, Philip, it's gonna be, that'll be great. That'll be really, that's a cool thing.
That is if I can get through Secret Service, then now.